Moving on to 11C, Agenda 9 and 11C. And we have a bunch of folks that have signed up that want to speak, public comment. What I'd like to do is read what 11C is. Then maybe get a motion and a second on the table, because we are going to vote on it tonight. And then we'll hear public comment and then commissioner comments and then we'll wrap up. So 11C is a review and discussion of the proposed oil and gas ordinance as brought forth by Planning and Zoning Commission, says in here Commissioner Nancy Dodger. And a request for a motion to approve publication of title and general summary of the Planning and Zoning Oil and Gas Ordinance Draft, September 2017, final version. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
For the purpose of conversation, I need a motion to approve.
Do you hear a second? Second, have a motion and a second. Now let's go to the discussion. First, I'm in by the public vote, and then we'll hear from the commissioners, and then we'll entertain the Agenda 9 and 11C. First on my list from the public is Chelsea Allen.
Her name is Chelsea Allen. I live at 1216 Cox in Santa Fe, and I'm currently a third-year law student at University of New Mexico. I've been a resident in Santa Fe since 2012, and New Mexico is home to the U.S. After law school, I would like to work in oil and gas in New Mexico.
It's not your view, ma'am.
After law school, I would like to work in oil and gas in New Mexico, ideally in northern New Mexico. Unfortunately, most of the opportunities in energy and oil and gas are in government or out of state. It's not because the resources aren't here, it's because the parts of the state where I currently live and where I want to continue to make my home have essentially banned oil and gas and have limited my opportunities. I'm currently faced with trying to find energy work either in government, which is rather scarce, extremely scarce actually, or find work in one of the very few private sector jobs, or to move out of state where jobs in energy and oil and gas are plentiful. Many of our brightest lawyers are already leaving the state for higher salaries, for better schools for their children, and for more opportunity generally. The oil and gas bans in northern New Mexico are only increasing this exodus. I've been fortunate to have had a chance to work on this oil and gas ordinance as a law clerk, and also at one time I've worked as an extra for the Oil Conservation Commission, which regulates oil and gas in New Mexico. The OCD is a very excellent organization. They have a very hardworking and dedicated team. I've witnessed firsthand how seriously they take their duty to regulate oil and gas production in New Mexico in order to protect the public safety and environmental concerns of this state. The OCD's entire mission is to regulate New Mexico oil and gas. They're already doing that job, and they do it well. In closing, I would recommend that the commission adopt the Stoddard Ordinance as it is without further adaptation or amendments. The remaining concerns of our citizens are fully addressed by the OCD and beyond.
All right, thank you, Ms. Allen.
I'm Charles Goodmacher. I'm a Rio Rancho resident, live less than a mile from here, have two daughters in the public schools, and I'm here tonight primarily to speak about an ordinance that apparently you're not hearing tonight, but will soon the Right to Work Ordinance. I work with the National Education Association in New Mexico.
Can you hear me, sir?
I work with the National Education Association of New Mexico, and we are opposing, or hope you will oppose that Right to Work Ordinance when it gets introduced for many reasons. As educators, we're on the front lines of seeing consequences from what's happening with the economy in our state. We all know how much our economy is hurting and the need for more jobs. We understand that's one of the plots behind this effort. Sadly, New Mexico policymakers need to know that Right to Work does not create more jobs. It actually hurts the working class, and it would hurt the working class here in Sandoval County. First of all, it spurs away the rights of workers. I believe that that's really the impetus behind it, because again, the other point about it doesn't create jobs. It's been shown to drive down wages where it has been implemented, wages actually go down average overall wages. Right to Work backers say it will create jobs and green companies here. Seven of the 10 states with the highest unemployment rates are Right to Work states. There's no direct impact on actual employment.
Hi.
Thank you, sir. Have your three, two minutes of each other.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'd like to submit to the board two maps. They are from the Clean Air Task Force, based on EPA analysis of cancer and respiratory health risk to residents of every county in the United States. And I'll leave these with you, and you can pass them around, but you can see by casual look that the northwestern and southeastern parts of the state are at risk for asthma, for respiratory illness, and for cardiovascular illness. I can provide citations for this information if you like. Both areas specifically northwest San Juan County and Lea and Eddy Counties in the southeast are listed at high risk, above EPA levels of concern for cancer and respiratory health. I know we're going to be looking at an oil and gas ordinance tonight, and I want to say that the ordinance, the Stoddard Ordinance does not address some of the policies that we need to address to lower the risk for these people in this part of our state, these parts of our state. Things like setbacks, baseline testing, independent monitoring, and many proven low-cost technologies and practices available to reduce pollution from oil and gas that affect these critical parts of our state and protect the health of their residents. I also want to include a study from Yale that shows living within a half-mile, 2,640 feet from oil and gas production is correlated with health impacts, including respiratory illnesses. I know that the Stoddard Ordinance has a 750-foot setback. That's less than a third of what was needed. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to come before you here this evening. Michael Sandoval was here, the former governor of San Felipe from last year. But I am the current governor of San Felipe. My name is Anthony Ortiz, and so we're going to just change things because of the capacity. But anyways, I don't have anything prepared, like a statement or testimony to share with you, but I will just, because of the late notice that I received just this afternoon that you all are going to be gathering here today in regards to what's been poised here. And I have a lot of concern about fracking and drilling because of a lot of numerous things. And as you can all see, as people of New Mexico, what I say about protection, what are people, you know, surrounding us with a lot of other communities like Texas, California, and those places, and look at all the disasters that they're facing with numerous things that they face with, you know, disastrous type of things. And fortunately, we're not going through anything like that. But if we start to drill, start to do fracking, then what are we going to initiate? I hope we don't face anything like our area to become the disasters of earthquakes or whatever. That is my concern. And with all these other things that, you know, that have been mentioned, of what people's life are taking, having to do with cancer, and I'm one of them, they have to struggle. My family, one of my tribal members, that was taken by the life of cancer just recently, couple months ago. And with my concern of staying here, you know, I hope you will be reconsidering what's going to be coming toward us. And like I said, I didn't prepare any statement to come before you, but those are my concerns, a lot of other concerns that... And the other time when you already met, well, this was a few months, several months ago, and I was not even invited, you know, as your neighboring community in San Felipe, which I could have already been here, because I have a lot of concerns about drilling and fracking of our mother earth, you know. I would hope that we should not be destroying our mother earth of course. I know, the concern of generating our revenues, I am aware about that, but it should not be a type to frag or be drilling our mother earth. Thank you very much.
Welcome anytime, Governor. Thank you for coming tonight. Up next then is, hey, we're on page two already, Evie Jones?
Not here. Evie Jones? Yeah.
Evie Jones? Did I think that right? Is it Evie?
It's a little confusing. It's a little confusing. I'll try to clarify.
Okay, thank you. And we need your address, because you didn't put it on the sheet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I am actually Dr. Dora Steels, and Evie Jones couldn't be here, and I am hoping that I'll be able to read.
Go right ahead, Nancy, you got two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come in once before you tonight. On the agenda is not what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. And worse, the county commission chairman prevented PNC from making a well-thought-out recommendation. Tonight, we should simply bounce Agenda Item 11C back to planning and zoning. We understand that the county commission chairman has been under enormous pressure from the oil and gas industry to pass their ordinance quickly. This time, pressure makes no sense, because applications to drill are already allowed right now, today, under the county's existing ordinances. A good history: In mid-August, county staff was directed to throw away a year of work and start over. A six-page industry draft called Stoddard surfaced instead. The county commission chair put the Stoddard proposal before your August report agenda, skipping the required review by PNC and the recommendation. You heard the complaints of poor process and voted to remand the ordinance, instructing PNC to continue its work. In the meanwhile, a well-informed citizens group has been working on an ordinance draft to address many of the weaknesses of the Stoddard and prior drafts. Several planning and zoning commissioners have seen the citizens draft and requested that PNC officially review it besides the Stoddard draft before making a recommendation. The citizens group was present, was to present their draft on September 5th. The five-hour, September 5th, PNC work session made very limited changes to stamp that against Stoddard draft.
Hi.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry about the time.
Thank you, ma'am. I know we've heard from you before, Ms. Robbins, but I need your address for the record.
16 Dos Aminitas Placitas. And welcome, Commissioner Rollins, Fulton Rollins. And that last piece was actually written by Bob Wesley. That was not finished. My name is Laura Robbins, and as a resident of Sandoval County, I'm disturbed that this draft ordinance, the Stoddard, is being considered for publishing and posting. There are so many issues that it does not address, so I need to ask you all some questions. Why are you considering this flawed draft, which was written by and only supports the oil and gas industry? Why are you considering an ordinance that would exclude the public from knowing about and having input into an oil and gas company's request for a permit? Had permissive use applied during the sand rich application, there would have been no public input, and a bankrupt company might have been given permission to drill in Rio Rancho Estates. Why are you considering an ordinance that does not require an applicant to provide proof of its fiscal solvency and evidence that it has complied with environmental laws both in-state and out-of-state? Why are you considering an ordinance that does not require the industry to pay for the deterioration of county roads specifically caused by oil and gas traffic, an issue of concern to residents of Cuba? Why are you considering an ordinance that does not require the industry to contribute to special training and equipment needed for emergency services? Accidents will happen, there are fortified oil spills a day in New Mexico. Why do you think that $5 million general liability insurance will cover damages that may occur? The state currently does not have the resources to pay for all the oil and gas environmental damages that occur. Eddy County and Carlsbad are fighting the state to pay for millions of dollars to repair damages created by an oil and gas injection well now.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins.
We wish we got answers to this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you start that clock, do, could we address the situation about there's people signed up to speak, specifically one right after me? Who's top downstairs?
Obviously, somebody else signed up.
No, he was in here, but then he got caught outside.
Oh, well, I think...
Okay, well, anyway, address. My name is...
I was there.
I got it. Thank you. Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Neese. I live in Placitas, 86 Camino Redondo. I have been attending this discussion since the beginning, approximately 21 months ago. I want to point out that there are people downstairs that did not get reserved seats, but why is it that the industry gets reserved seats? The fact that we have an ethics ordinance going through the county right now, 19 pages, 19 pages where the oil and gas ordinance is nine plus a signature page. But one of the things that this ethics ordinance says is public servants hold office employment or volunteer for the benefit of the public, I'll cut to the last sentence, to discharge faithfully the duties of their office regardless of personal considerations and to recognize that the public interest must be of prime concern. When this was discussed last week, it was discussed without this document even being on the agenda. The public had no ability to check this document out, and it was very hard for me to get a copy of this document. So I'm a little concerned that ethics might be in violation even on the ethics ordinance discussion, but let's go back to the planning on tonight's agenda we are talking about. It says recommendations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. So Bill Brown is not here.
He's downstairs.
Barbara Snow. Wayne Armstrong.
I'm Barbara Snow, and I'm going to pass to the next person.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong. Come on up, sir.
Wayne Armstrong, 13 Calle Fijian Placitas. I've been here before. I understand you gentlemen have received a copy of the citizens draft ordinance, 25 pages. If you remove the strike, it's like 24 pages. I'm not going to talk specifics, there's just too many things wrong with the Stoddard ordinance. I want to make some global comments. This document represents, 27% of this document is a Stoddard document, okay? The citizens committee, which I had nothing to do with, added less than 3%, okay? So the question is, do the math, where did the other 70% come from? Was it created by them? No. It was created by subject matter experts, that's the Planning and Zoning Board. They created the 70% that's in here, and somehow that 70% was dismissed, deleted, whatever, and that became the Stoddard document. That's just wrong. There's just too many things wrong with the Stoddard document that is corrected by this document, 70%. That 70% needs to be put back into the Stoddard document with modifications and sent back to the Planning and Zoning Board, which are the subject matter executives. Now, how did this happen? I've been told that it was the result of paid lobbyists that somehow got involved and created the Stoddard document, and that was sent back to the Planning and Zoning Board. That's just dead wrong. You guys have to do your job and scratch the Stoddard document, send the citizens document back to the Planning and Zoning Board, and have it done right. Thank you very much.
I knew it was here.
Thank you. George Franssen, 13 Calle Fijian Placitas, Vice President of ESCA. On behalf of the Eastern Sandoval Citizens Association, we would like to make the following comments concerning the oil and gas ordinance as proposed by the commission. First and foremost, this proposal changes the type of use of oil and gas drilling from special to permissive. This change would permit oil and gas drilling to be cited anywhere in the county without public review. Designating oil and gas drilling as a permissive use places the decision-making power in the hands of appointed directors and the planning and zoning department. There is no requirement for any public hearing, no requirement for public votes, no requirement for public vote. We oppose to changing the use designation from special to permissive. By planning to do so, the county subverts the democratic process, which I thought we talked about earlier, the importance of a democratic process. ESCA is also opposed to the requirement listed in the proposed ordinance. The requirements do not adequately address needed protection, impact to groundwater, emergency response, noise, air, road use, hazardous waste, solid waste, site replication, and...
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franssen.
Listen to the citizens that you represent.
Thank you, sir.
Sayegi, I'm from Torre, New Mexico. The border town that serves us, or that we serve, is Cuba, New Mexico, and I would like all of y'all to focus on what's going on over the hill in Gravenchaco, where we are being played out by BLM, the state, and counties. There are no evacuation plans, and we are at a high threat from fracking, and no one is paying attention to it. And so before you make a decision on our behalf, please respect tribal consultations with our chapter houses, because I have not heard a meeting that is directly with our tribal officials and with the pueblo nations as well. And please, look at what's going on at Chaco, look at the methane cloud that's above us, and like, we have to pay attention to those things, because that is all, you know, warming up our earth, and we need to do something about that, rather than signing leases and allowing these to happen, because it does not benefit my community at all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. My name is Jim McKenzie. I'm currently residing in Albuquerque, but I resided in Sandoval County for two, seven years, and it's still near and dear to my heart. I am the co-coordinator of an organization called 350 New Mexico, and we have many members that are here tonight and live in Sandoval County. I just wanted to ask you one favor. This is a long contentious meeting. I see a number of you have laptops. Would you do me a favor? Would you Google Firestone, Colorado, gas explosion? Okay? In April of this year, there was a gas explosion in Firestone, Colorado, which is north of Denver and west of Boulder. A house was destroyed, two people were killed, and two more were seriously injured. As a result of that, Governor Hickman had a number of statements, and the industry, the same industry we're talking about tonight, the oil and gas industry, had to shut down a number of facilities. So just take a minute and look at the news reports about gas explosion, Firestone, Colorado. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Franssen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Miguel Suazo, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Threst Energy in support of the Stoddard version of the oil and gas ordinance. You know, this process has gone on for coming about two years, and, you know, the charge's always been there's no regulation of oil and gas. Well, if you look right over there, you'll see the state statutes that regulate this industry. An ordinance here does not make this industry safer, it just causes more red tape and creates less jobs in the community. With me tonight, who can't be here because they got into a car accident and are trying to get over here for New Mexico Tech students, and they want to come here to impart to you that they support the Stoddard ordinance because they want to see, they want to have the ability to practice their professions in this state. You know, I like the saying, the signal and the noise, and the signal in this case came to the state in Albuquerque Journal, where it said that New Mexico is now five percentage points behind Mississippi in unemployment. Well, the noise that's here behind you is overlooking that. We need jobs, and we need them now. We're training people to enter this industry here today, and they're going to go to Houston, to Denver, to North Dakota, if they don't have the opportunity to practice their profession because of decisions in counties such as this, counties such as where I'm from, in northern New Mexico, that took an anti-industry stance, and now they're hemorrhaging jobs and we're losing our kids. So this is an ordinance about economic development, and I hope that you vote to publish the Stoddard version of the ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Franssen. Be respectful, people, please. I've allowed you to applaud every one of your speakers so far. Robert Banat.
My name's Robert Banat. I'm a senior landman for Threst Energy. I'm a native New Mexican in the oil and gas business, our family. I also feel that too often that those of us from different parts of the state understand too little about the special things that each section of New Mexico holds. So I'd like to share a little about my job, a job that's commonplace and respected in southeastern New Mexico. In my line of work, oil and gas companies hire people like me to perform the tedious task of searching county records and federal documents to determine who owns various surface mineral interests and overriding... mineral interests and overriding royalties, much like what you do to hire a title company to research the title insurance purposes when you buy a home. This is a demanding, time-consuming, tedious work, but it can pay anywhere from $350 to $650 per day. I think that many people in this community, in any community, could benefit from an opportunity to obtain jobs like this. This is just one type of common, high-paying job in the oil and gas industry. Skills acquired as a landman are transferred, both often to other oil and gas companies and even wind and solar companies, looking to establish projects. But the fact is that compliance or regulation drives up costs. Costs limit us, just like costs limit all of our choices. And costs dictate where we do and do not operate, and they determine what we can and cannot do. My family and I are here to help this community provide jobs. We hope that you want to welcome these jobs. And if you do, we find the Stoddard ordinance, while unnecessary, in line with all the regulations already required, to be followed as a reasonable ordinance. I recommend its passage without amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manette. Up next, Jonas?
He's one of the New Mexico Tech students. I don't know if they're going to make it.
Ah, okay.
Mr. Kerr?
We can give him an opportunity.
Mr. Brown, you're from Brown Environmental now.
Who's this?
Mr. Brown has been allowed back into the room.
Mr. Bill Brown?
Yes.
Come on up, sir.
And Kaylee is here.
Kaylee made it now?
Yes.
Yeah, I know some people are waiting in the outer room to get in. I see my wife made it in. That's nice. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Bill Brown. I'm a resident of Placitas, in the Overlook community, and I'm also the president of the Overlook Homeowners Association. And with, basically, our community is against the current proposed regulations, and so am I. And as a practicing hydrologist, I mean, I also went to New Mexico Tech for a while, and I've been to UNM as well. And I do have a problem with this, because I believe that the water supply for tens to hundreds of thousands of people is potentially in jeopardy due to oil and gas production. This ordinance, if it passed, oversimplifies the geology of Sandoval County. There are areas in the county that are very susceptible to groundwater contamination. And I don't believe at this time that the county has anything set up to look at those areas and protect those. And the rift, which is where most people live, is probably the most, has the greatest potential for impact. Once the water's contaminated, it's contaminated. And I would, I would come across and say that if an oil company does not have the funds to do a basic proposal, to turn stuff in, to have some public review, like almost every other, many other counties in the state across the country, then they probably don't have the funds to deal with any kind of problem that comes up during drilling, which often happens. I drilled, and sat hundreds of wells. Things go wrong. That's just all there is to it. And so if a company doesn't have the money, or wherewithal, or insurance to provide for issues like that, when things go wrong, they'll basically just declare bankruptcy. And then it'll end up coming back to the county, and when someone has their well contaminated, then I believe that leaves the county up to, you know, potential legal impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Kaylee, do you want to come up? Kaylee Warren?
My name is Kaylee Warren. I'm an indigenous woman of this land. I'm from the Pueblo's of Santa Clara and Isleta. I come here in opposition of this. I want to ask, and I want to bring to attention the lack of tribal consultation. Article 32 of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People details the human right of tribes to receive free, prior, and informed consultation when something like this will be happening in ancestral land within the areas of their communities. If you look at the map that's been presented, the areas where the oil and gas wells will be developed are well within the areas where tribal people currently reside, where ancestral lands are. And I think it's important to note the pro-industry narrative that I've heard just within my first few minutes in this room, where the priority is money over life. What price can you put on a person's culture? What price can you put on the life of a person? There has to be another solution to the state's economic problems that doesn't cost either. I urge you to consider this conflict. As indigenous people, we're often left out of this narrative, and in this situation, we absolutely have been. That's a violation of our human rights, but it also calls into question Sandoval County's dedication to its indigenous constituents. I would hope that you show us the same respect that you would to an industry.
My name is Benton Hall, and I live here in Burnley Old Township, just down the road. I would like to talk about the issue of water, particularly in how it affects this whole thing. So, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. I'd like to direct my comments to Article 6, Drilling Requirements in the Stoddard Ordinance. In particular, let's consider Section 6.7, Water Protection. The operator is going to utilize best practices to ensure that the surface of water and groundwater protected during operations comply with all applicable state and federal regulations. Unfortunately, in this paragraph, we don't see anything about the water, the access to water and water sources. But we know the fracking the community uses from 2 to 14 million gallons of water to fracture a single well. So there's a supply problem for water in New Mexico. The Department of Reclamation is now publicizing in Latin, of balance of water being used versus water being supplied. And they put out a press release August 30th. This concerns the shortage of water in Arizona. With a water shortage, how can your ordinance propose fracking that will consume a huge amount of water? This ordinance does not explain how you're going to furnish this water that will be needed without taking it away from the cities of Raritan, Placitas, and Burnalia. If this county does not have sufficient water, then this ordinance is not protecting the community in the present and future water shortage. You must delay the ordinance until the county can prove a current and future water supply. To go farther with this ordinance, a decision would have to be made, to give the water to the ranchers and farmers, or to use it for drilling.
Mr. Hall?
This information is available from UNEC.
Two minutes. Two minutes. Appreciate it. I don't know if I'm saying the last name right. Teresa Cudores? No? Alan Freeman? Take and follow the bouncing ball.
Hi, Chairman Chapman and Commissioners. Excuse me. My name is Alan Freeman. I live at 52 on the Sazi Trail Loop in Placitas. I'm speaking not only for myself tonight, but also as a voice for many citizens of Sandoval County. You consider taking a serious step of publishing and posting an ordinance, as has been rushed through the planning and zoning process, an ordinance with all too many deficiencies, our request that the Stoddard oil and gas ordinance not be brought forward for publishing and posting tonight. Instead, our request that the Planning and Zoning Commission be given the time to review the citizens' draft of oil and gas ordinance and to come up with a more acceptable alternative than a flawed one that is before you. More than a dozen citizens of this county worked hard to draft fair and balanced oil and gas ordinance. Elements were taken from the Stoddard draft, planning and zoning staff drafts and reports, and from county and municipal ordinances from oil and gas-producing regions of the state. We were careful not to preempt oil and gas activities in the county or to be in conflict with state and federal laws regulating oil and gas. The citizens' draft balances the needs of the oil and gas industry with the very important needs and concerns of the county, our citizens, and the environment. The Stoddard draft, on the other hand, is extremely one-sided. Although the Planning and Zoning Commission heard the citizens' draft last week, due to pressure from Chairman Chapman to have the Stoddard ordinance on agenda today, the citizens' draft, due to times restraints, would not vet it. The ordinance, as described by Chairman Arango in his memo to you, is thoughtful and well-drafted, and some instances, the study group's language improves the Stoddard text. The citizens' draft deserves a serious hearing by Planning and Zoning, and I urge you to return this important issue to Planning and Zoning and let them vet the citizens' draft and come up with an ordinance that will ensure that the county, its citizens, and the environment are protected.
No, I'm not here to talk about draft. For a change. I'm Dick Olber from Placitas, Chair of the ESCA LPT, President of the Anusazza HOA, and a registered Republican. Because I hear some in this county think that the only ones supporting this activity are, well, let's just say liberal Democrats. And let me tell you, that's not the case. Placitas has a few of those, but we also have a substantial Republican base out there. But as Mike Mees has repeatedly told you, this is about the water. We are fully supportive of economic development in this county. We love some of what you're doing right now, and we love these kids wanting to stay in this area and have jobs. We hope the jobs are here. But you destroy the water, and it won't be. All you have to do is read about the wells that Sunoco poisoned over in the Pennsylvania area, that was just a few miles from where my wife and I lived, in Exton, or in the, elsewhere in the Appalachian Basin, where my grandfather was one of the first wildcatters back in the early 1900s. So I grew up with oil. Dr. Friedman, highly respected in our area because of some of the work he's done to purify our water in Placitas, has provided you with a sound scientific paper showing that 6% failure rate. Well integrity, 6% rate. So I want to ask you, despite this data, are you going to bet on the assurances of the oil and gas well and say that you're willing to let them punch holes in our aquifer and that those casings are not going to leak? You'd be going against the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. As you know, I'm an academic. I was an academic for many years.
Can you hear me, Mary?
You can't hear me? I was an academic for many years. My name is Mary Feldblum, I'm from Peralis. And I have looked at this ordinance that you're looking at with a perspective of, if you were my students, what grade would I be? And it would have to be an F. There's just no question. And let me just cite a few very critical reasons that I hope you will consider returning this ordinance back to the Planning and Zoning so that they can do the work that they're supposed to do. The first issue is that the proposed ordinance removes rights that the county and its residents should preserve, not give away. Counties, according to Judge Browning in the Moore decision, and it's not a ban, went have the authority not only to have land use laws, but the judge says similarly, the existence of the Oil Conservation Division and its ability to enact and enforce regulations does not cause the Oil and Gas Act to preempt the entire oil and gas field. In other words, the decision, which has not been challenged today, raises a very, very serious question that the ordinance presents. Why would a local government defer, and I'm quoting it from the ordinance, "its powers and authority to that of state and federal agencies if any conflict occurs regarding this ordinance and state and federal laws?" The Stoddard proposal makes a presumption in Section 1.3 that state and federal regulations are always right, that the county is presumed to be always wrong. That is an enormous assumption. And if I may go a little bit longer. The other issue is transparency and public accountability. And these are important words that I've heard before this commission. The director of Planning and Zoning is authorized to automatically grant a permit after a simple checklist is deemed complete. There's no public notice and no public hearing. Once that is complete, then the company can drill. And then, since there are no requirements for hours of operations, they can drill at any time of day or night. And then, once the county permit is given, it can't be taken away unless OCD does. Why would you even consider an ordinance that removes the right of the public to be informed about such a major undertaking and to have their concerns heard and hopefully addressed? Thank you.
Ed Burkin? No? Mario? I'm sorry. Come on up, sir. I can't pronounce it.
Good evening. It's Atencio.
Atencio. Thank you, sir. Please speak up, sir.
Hello, my name is Mario Atencio, wet clan, born for bitter water clan. I'm from Nutnezin. In Spanish, it's called Tori honor. And so I come to you as a relative of all my people, and we're saying that, I come here to say that this Planning and Zoning ordinance, I don't know if any of those, the 12 nations of people, indigenous peoples, were even consulted with. There is a State-Tribal Collaboration Act on the books, and we're closely with the Torian Chapter House and the Owensino Chapter House and the Councilor Chapter House. They formed together as a group. Their constituents are largely Sandoval County residents. What we're, what I'm very scared of is the lack of parity in any of these planning issues and processes, because we are hardcore voting members of Sandoval County. And none of this has even been brought to our attention. Some of this, the proposed drilling is really adjacent to tribal lands. And what is, what is one thing that's probably out of order in that ordinance you're sweeping through is that, according to the 2005 Energy Policy Act, where federal governance preempts any of all of this stuff, horizontal drilling or hydraulic fraction is exempt from the Safe Drinking Water Act, Clean Air Act, Circle. Clean Air Act, CIRCO, the Superfund Act, the Superfund monies. So you're going to be approving an unregulated oil issue, even though this guy comes in with political whatever, political drama. That stuff is not regulated. So this is the thing, the lives of the people of the county are at stake. I drive 550 all the way through San Luis, San Luis, all the way down to Toriyana. And I'm saying there's going to be a lot of stuff that's going to happen out there, head-on collisions. You already saw it. One thing, in case of point last thing that I'm going to finish, in Naiyzi, a family of four was wiped out on 550. Because of oil, drugs, and gas. Very dangerous things are coming, and you want to do this, you're branding. It's really hard to have something beautiful when there's oil jacks.
Bill Perkins? Anita Amstutz? Sorry, I thought you could get that right.
That's perfect.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Anita Amstutz. I live downstream in Bernalillo County. And as far as I know, fracking makes bad neighbors. As a Bernalillo County dweller, I am very aware that you are here and that I have watched this process closely. I wonder how oil and gas is a bridge to the future. I see Rio Rancho has a city motto, "Rio Rancho, City of Vision." A city of vision, speaking to young people who want jobs, would be to renewable, clean energy. But not in this current political climate. That is where we're going. And this fossil fuel death train is going down. In New Mexico, I don't need to speak about the water that is fragile on a high desert plain. You all have heard that. How we use millions of gallons of that precious water to purify the deadly cocktail of chemicals used for fracking. Recently, I came to your county courthouse, and I sat here. And I wanted to draw your attention to the mural in the back of this room, as well as all the emblems along the top. This, when you talk about peak demenichi, this is your Commonwealth. These are what you serve. They all represent the values of an intact and healthy land and water base and the communities they have served for millennia. Many who have come before us, the nine pueblos, we see the seals of the nine pueblos, we see the Sanlaco County villages, they have kept this land in sacred trust. Are we willing to squander and frivolity for a few seasons of fracking and study of building a future of solar energy now? To our great stupidity, short-sighted denial of drought and the preciousness of water, we live with the lack of political will in our leaders. And I see county and city officials turn a blind eye to diversifying our energy economy and continuing to look back at oil and gas development. Corrupt Commissioners, follow the money. Commissioners with integrity, let's go.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Yvonne Chino. I'm the resident of Rio Rancho. I am submitting for the record today a file of CDs and documents of peer-reviewed studies regarding the fracking industry and its impacts. I am doing this on behalf of the citizens of Sandoval County and the Common Ground Community Trust. I hope that this, we've had problems with submitting records, and I hope that this record goes in and is there for any type of appeal in the future when these impacts are going to affect the health and safety, water and air of the county's citizens. Because this ordinance does not protect them. And I was supposed to ask if you are going to give permission for these documents to be entered into the record. I also have a list of information here that I need to submit for the record, and it has all of our safety concerns in there because you have never given us a safety emergency response plan. We have an outstanding EPR request, and it's been outstanding since September 5th, 2016. Now, we have water safety issues, emission safety issues. I don't have time to read all of these, but I hope that you do. Somebody could take these and bring them to the Commissioners.
Hi.
And we hope that you do the risk assessments that are necessary and cost-benefit analysis, especially on our tax valuations, on our property taxes down the line. This is going to affect the value of our properties and it's going to impact our health. And I want to make sure that these things are in the record so that the county understands the magnitude of the issues that we are presenting.
Thank you, Ms. Chino. Next up is New Mexico Representative Jared Lent.
Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my constituents this evening. I'm the representative for House District 65, which includes a large portion of Sandoval County. That large portion of Sandoval County includes seven pueblos, three Navajo Nation chapters, and the town of Bernalillo. And I'm here tonight to articulate to all of you positions from my constituencies in my district and even those outside of my district. Those inside my district include those sovereign nations that I mentioned before, the town of Bernalillo, a lot of which, some, are this state's oldest communities, if not this nation's oldest communities. We're built on a history of partnership, of friendship, a resilient community that's based on just that, we take care of each other. Resilient because we have respect for one another. And our core roots, where we come from, the pueblos, the town of Bernalillo, respect each other, and the decisions that are made are well-vetted amongst each other. We respect one another, and most of all, we respect the landscape which has taken care of us since time immemorial. What has transpired over the past several months at this point flies extremely in the face of everything that those communities, those plaques in the back of me on that wall stand for, which is community. As an elected official, as elected officials, for all of us, we must stand for transparency, we must stand for inclusion in any governmental decision that we are considering or that we will eventually make. To my knowledge, that has not happened. And I'm looking at every single one of you, that has not happened by your planning and zoning commissioners or even the proposed decision that you were creating tonight. It's not happened. The plaques on the walls, the places that I represent, deserve that type of consideration. They deserve... They deserve that type of consideration, and they deserve that type of collaboration so that they understand what types of handcuffs you are putting them in. Because that's what it is. You are putting them in handcuffs. And as a state representative for many of these communities, we deserve the consultation. That Planning and Zoning Commission that you created, you as Commissioners deserve to provide those sovereign nations, the municipalities, that consultation. Because right now, none of the seven sovereign nations that I mentioned earlier, nor the town of Bernalillo, have been consulted on what the potential impacts. When I'm saying consultation, I mean unbiased, objective consultation. Ones that, if you're not telling them what you're going to do, ones that provide them an opportunity to interact with you so that they can create with you a future for this area that we call home. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, those people I talked about earlier, the historical people that have lived in this area since time immemorial, their roots are deep. Oil and gas companies go, and they come with the money. We have to live here. My daughter has to live here. Her kids have to live here. Our people have to live here forever. We were here first. We'll be here last. And as I've said before, in the legislature, on the House floor, that when the people lead, the leaders will follow. And I'm asking all of you to consider what your people are saying. Stop following the money. Follow what your people are saying. And I appreciate the opportunity to address all of you this evening.
Thank you, Representative. Carolyn Lassous?
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, my indigenous brothers and sisters. Good evening, all my relations. Thank you. I am here to present for the record an email from Cochití Pueblo, which asks several questions about this oil and gas ordinance. This was presented at the September 12 Planning and Zoning Committee, and the vote was made without even any consideration of these questions. So I will give this to you to be entered into the record. Thank you. Second, I wanted to address a letter that was submitted by the American Indian Movement of Albuquerque, and it was submitted at your June meeting to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because the public has had problems making sure, verifying that all these have been submitted, I will forward that letter to you. What that letter indicated was it referenced Executive Order 13175, where tribal consultation is required. Also, we requested a five-year moratorium so that appropriate studies can be completed so that you can make an educated and logical and very valid decision to complete your ordinance that will affect us all. Lastly, the county preempted the National Historic Preservation Act and the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act, Chapter 106, Public Law 101-601, 25 U.S.C., 3001, Sequential 104, Statute 3048, United States Federal Law enacted November 16, 1990, tribal consultation. We propose the county show goodwill and follow federal policy and historic preservation. Counties are required to follow the Act when cultural landscape includes public lands. There is a statement in the standard operating procedures for tribal notification to drill within three miles of reservation borders only. Note, county Commissioners stated that they would have a public hearing at Santa Domingo. Then they preempted the National Historic Preservation Act. I will not... Give me just a little bit more time, please. Thank you.
Give me another one, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Let us not quibble about the law. Let us be good neighbors. This affects us all. We are here before you to request that you listen to us. I can't say anything more than that. Please hear us. Please engage with us in meaningful consultation without all this legal hassle. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Eleanor Bravo. I'm reading a state from Mr. Henderson. He is from Corrales, New Mexico, Sandoval County. I am 100% opposed to the very weak Stoddard ordinance. I am 100% in favor of the citizens' ordinance. Please take the necessary steps to adopt this ordinance. In a phone conversation with one county commissioner, I was assured that the citizens' ordinance is unnecessary because there are state and federal regulations that cover everything. If this is in fact true, then I ask, why would you even think of opposing the citizen ordinance? Is the pressure from the oil companies really that heavy? Protect the citizens that elected you. Represent your constituents. Do the right thing for the people of Sandoval County. We do not want unregulated drilling in the face of all the citizens of Sandoval County that have demonstrated their opposition to the Stoddard ordinance. How could you possibly think about passing it? I enjoyed the branding conversation. And about this, for the Sandoval County brand, quote, "Where you can drill wherever you want." Is this the branding that you want? The choice is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Chino. Joanne Young?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joanne Young, and I'm of 14 Sunset Boulevard in Placitas.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to make three points in my time. The first is the thousands of pages that industry points to over there as adequate protection for our water systems does not actually, in fact, protect our water systems. And I have some proof to show you from OCD themselves. This is a generalized record of groundwater impact sites that OCD generated back in 2005, and it's from the 90s, the mid-'90s to 2005. It has no fewer than 700 instances of groundwater impact sites here in New Mexico. So the claim that's been made here that there has never been one instance of groundwater contamination from drilling operations here in New Mexico is completely false. And I'm stating that based on OCD's own report. So I'd like to admit this report is evidence at the end of my comments. The second point is to please wait for the New Mexico Bureau of Geology and Mineral Resources Study that's currently underway by Mr. Ron Broadhead, which Sandoval County commissioned, as it will inform the public and the planning and zoning staff regarding potentially oil-producing strata in relation to aquifer-bearing strata, which is mainly the concern by most people here today. My third point is to say that the Stoddard ordinance is not nearly sufficient to protect our county, its resources, and its people. Please look to the citizens' ordinance that springs from dozens of hours of research for strong oil and gas ordinances already in place in New Mexico to inform a strong oil and gas ordinance here for Sandoval County. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to point out that the United States is great. And one of the reasons it's great is...
I'm here, ma'am.
One of the reasons the United States is great is because we have the ability to speak locally and to determine ourselves locally. Locally to the city level, locally to the county level. I think most of us want jobs, want wealth, want great value brought to our homes. Part of that value is in the land. Part of that value is in the resources. But each local community should have the right to say what type of jobs they want at what particular point. The citizens' proposal will allow and will give back to the people the opportunity for them to speak locally. And that is what we are asking for. Do not take away one of the greatest powers that the United States has given to its people. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Jenkins, 1312 Tiffany Lane. I'm here as a private citizen speaking in favor of the Stoddard ordinance. I am a certified economic developer and have been so for 42 years. Local economic development is like a patchwork quilt. It's all intertwined, interrelated, and connected. As an economic developer, I'm concerned every day about every working person in our community having the opportunity to take a quality paycheck home. That is a guiding principle I've always had in my career. I'm not concerned about certain segments. I'm concerned about everyone. But I'm concerned that families and individuals have an opportunity for a quality job. We have over 6% of our population, our working population, that right now does not have that opportunity. In my career, whenever communities impose unreasonable owners and costly regulations on one sector, it has a cascading impact that affects the whole economy. The oil and gas industry represents 14% of the economy in the state. 14% of its gross state product is oil and gas. The average wage of oil and gas in this community is $6,000 a year, higher than the average for the entire county. For those reasons, and based on my experience, based on the fact I have read these Stoddard ordinance, have done my research, I believe it is reasonable and should be passed. And I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Up next is Lou Fisher.
I think my leg went to sleep.
So funny.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I have a great respect for all of you. I've interacted with all of you, except our newest commissioner, interpersonally. I just would appreciate if you kindly give me my two minutes and listen to what I have to say. I am about as pro-oil and gas as anybody you'll ever come across. I'm in the industry. I love the industry. What I do is I negotiate and close merger and acquisition transactions throughout the entire country and Canada. So I know our industry and I know it very well. And by the way, you don't have to give me a reserved seat. I'm happy to sit with my neighbors. And but what I want to share with you is something you're not going to get from anybody else, I don't think. I'm in a unique position, and I'll have some repercussions. But I can talk openly as an insider. And what I want to do is help you to understand an insider perspective of our industry. I have, my clients are owners of drilling companies. I've helped them find financing, get merged with bigger companies, bring in investors. And what I really want to share with you is that we are entrepreneurs and we need to be regulated. We need to be regulated and we need to be fairly and firmly regulated. Because we're entrepreneurs, if we have free, easy regulations, we have the potential to become our own worst enemy. And I've seen it throughout the years and throughout the country. So I just want to point that out. And I have a packet that I, you'll have to guide me as to how to get this into the record. But I want this, I don't know if this has to go to your attorney, but it's it's letters from the mayor of Bernalillo expressing his outrage about this entire process. And he's been ignored, the pueblos. There's a lot of your constituents who are just being ignored in this process. And it's just fundamentally not correct. And also, these books over here, I'll tell you something else about it, about the industry. Those books are as worthwhile and as good as the degree to which they are enforced. And I can tell you, in many instances, they're not enforced at all because a lot of stuff doesn't even get reported. So I just want you to know that. I also know Chairman Orango. I've known him for 15 years. He's Ben Rock. I've seen commissioners come and go on both commissions. He's been there the whole time. He's a selfless servant of the public. He gets no money for what he does. Give him another chance. I know you guys are all primed up for your vote here. What I'm going to ask you to do, I just, I'm going to ask at least three of you to please stand up to this bulldozed process that has superseded everything else. Chairman?
Chairman, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Thank you. You've gone over here a lot of times, sir. We've heard from you many, many, many times at every meeting. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Appreciate your passion. I'll try it again. Burton Cox? Hope I got that right, sir.
Yes, he did.
Thank you.
Well, this is kind of interesting because I'm probably the only other oil insider here to speak on behalf of the citizens' ordinance.
Louder, please.
Okay. My name is Burton Cox. I live down the hill in Corrales. As to my credentials, I spent 26 years as a geologist and a upstream oil and gas project manager for Shell Oil Company. And so I have some experience with oil and gas developments. Obviously, I'm not an anti-development person. I believe that done right, oil and gas development can be a net positive. But it's clear to me that fossil fuel development is usually good for some segments of a local population, job seekers, mineral rights owners, some businesses. But it can be strongly negative to others, which include renters, landowners without mineral rights, businesses in competing industries, the general public from increased air, water, and noise pollution, increased use of scarce resources, for example, water, increased road traffic and road deterioration to increased traffic. In my career, I've worked on oil and gas developments from southeast New Mexico to Alaska to North Dakota to Nigeria. And I've seen good developments and I've seen communities that have been harmed from poorly planned and poorly executed developments. Unfortunately, oil and gas companies have made a lot of messes throughout the world. Left unregulated, many oil and gas companies will cut corners and choose the cheapest route from their standpoint. Don't accept what they say on face value. Look what they have done when they are unregulated and when, or when the regulators have been co-opted by the industry. Whether Sandoval County becomes the nexus of a new oil and gas development boom is not known. If that happens, you'll want to have regulations in place to be able to control those developments. This is a genie that cannot be put back in the bottle. Don't assume the state regulators care as much about your local community as you do. Don't automatically defer to them.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you for your time.
Henderson. Peggy Brought? Ryan Flynn?
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask to see my time with Mr. Flynn because he'll be covering most of the same topics I will.
I only have two minutes. I can follow directions.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
I just wanted to, my name is Ryan Flynn. I represent the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association. And I represent over 100,000 men and women who work in the oil and gas industry in New Mexico. Okay, let me start again then. My two minutes left. My name is Ryan Flynn. And I'm here on behalf of the over 100,000 men and women of the oil and gas industry who work in New Mexico, including the thousands of men and women in Sandoval County who have been working in the oil and gas industry for over 50 years. For over 50 years, our industry has been operating in Sandoval County. You've been insulted. You've been called corrupt tonight. You've been repeatedly presented with information that has simply no basis in fact. I want to...
True fact, true fact.
I want to, I would just request that I be given the opportunity to...
Yes, I agree. Please don't interrupt.
We've listened to the comments of our opposition. And this is my opportunity to come here. I'm not wagging my finger. I'm not bugging for the cameras.
Go ahead, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you. We've been participating in this process for over a year. I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for their thoughtful efforts. Make no mistake, the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association does not support local regulation of industry. We believe there are significant and stringent regulations currently in place at both the federal and state level. However, we have attempted to collaborate and compromise each and every time. Every time the Planning and Zoning Commission and this commission has asked questions, we have provided answers in the form of factual information. You've been presented with a false choice repeatedly. And that is, oil and gas, you have to choose between oil and gas activity, indeed, between the benefits of our modern society and environmental and public safety. And that is simply not a choice you need to make. We have drilled over 50,000 wells in the state of New Mexico without one single instance of groundwater contamination as a result of the oil and gas drilling process.
All right, people, please.
Our air quality today is at a dramatic improvement since 2005 levels as a direct result of the oil and gas industry. We've seen greenhouse gases, including methane emissions, decrease dramatically by almost 20% in the last 12 years.
Have some courtesy, people, please.
You're repeatedly...
Please, please. None of you all were interrupted. And there was no catcalling from the room when your speakers were up here. So have a little courtesy, please.
Thank you. You know, again, I listen here, I've been in your position many times before. And I listen to this, we're insulted over and over again. I don't envy your position, but I just ask you tonight to do what's right, to base your decision on facts, on evidence, on science. Don't be bullied. Don't believe that you have to make a choice between environmental protection and protecting your local communities. You don't. The idea that you can have renewable energy development without oil and gas, again, is simply false. Each and every renewable installation that's put in is backed up and coupled with oil and gas production. You've been presented repeatedly with factual information about the processes that we utilize, about our industry. We are the men and women who work alongside you. We are your friends. We are your neighbors. We care about your community. We care about your water quality. And we ask you just to make a decision that's grounded in science and our respect. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Jason Espinoza?
Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Jason Espinoza. I'm the president and CEO with the New Mexico Association of Commerce and Industry. And we represent businesses, both big and small, across every industry sector and every corner of the state. We do urge you tonight, on behalf of our membership, our statewide membership, to adopt the Stoddard ordinance without any changes. When we talk with the statewide, our membership, one of the biggest things that any business needs is certainty and predictability. We certainly believe that this balanced ordinance that has been carefully crafted over a year brings that into place, that balances existing state and federal law with issues in the county where the county truly has jurisdiction. The statewide business community also understands the importance of the oil and gas industry to the state economy, to our statewide education system in terms of workforce development and creating the jobs that we need, not only today, but for tomorrow. So we urge you to support the Stoddard ordinance without any changes. And thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Up next is Diane Policki. Policki?
Can I, can he just plug with me, please? He has some of the same things I wanted to say.
I have Pam Nice next, but not Mike. We've already heard from Mike.
No, he's Mike. He has some things I would like him to mention.
Oh, wait. Okay. All right.
My name is Diane Policki. I live in Placitas. I just like to address the air quality. The gentleman just said our air quality has improved. We have a monitor. The Mexico bar mile department up in Placitas. And we have two times a day where our air quality spikes into the danger zone. And even though they take an average, it's in the acceptable range. We still have in Placitas the worst air quality in New Mexico. So I just like to say I don't think that's true for Placitas. And Mike?
A couple of things that need to be brought out. On the agenda for tonight, on the 11th seat, there's Agenda Item Summary with recommendations. It says the Planning and Zoning Commission at their September 12, 2017 public hearing reviewed the proposed oil and gas ordinance and by a vote of three to two, recommended forwarding the proposed ordinance to the Board of County Commissions. That's true. With the recommendation to approve publication of the ordinance for the purpose of fulfillment of New Mexico's state statute, that is false. I don't know why we are printing stuff like that. But I hope you all have the memo from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The memo is supposed to be attached to this Stoddard ordinance. That's what they voted on. And it's not on the agenda again tonight. We are missing, many times, we are missing things on our agenda that need to be done. Mr. Orango says, because there was no time to consider such extensive changes coming from the citizens' group, the commission agreed to send the county board this memo highlighting. So I hope you have it. Do you have it? Because if you don't, I've got several copies.
Every commissioner has had it for federally...
Make sure that it gets discussed.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. General Speaker?
My leg went to sleep, too. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner.
Can you speak at the...
I'm expecting you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. My name is John Black. 36, 13, Mexico 528. I am a third-generation New Mexican. I'm not a newcomer. And I'm not a teenager anymore either. My mother was a native of Hope, New Mexico, before it was a state. That's a suburb of Artesia. For a geography lesson for some people, Hope is a little oil spot in the road on the way from... way from Artesia to Mayan. Anyway, I wholly support the Stoddard Ordinance without the amendments. I felt like our properties, I have 19 properties in Sandoval County that I pay tax on, I felt like our properties were sufficiently protected by the New Mexico laws and the federal laws. I have not seen any instances in my lifetime, in living in southern New Mexico and northern New Mexico, I've not seen a case where there was an incident with an oil and gas drilling project that was any huge detrimental event to our environment, but I've seen thousands of jobs generated. Everyone who came to this meeting tonight has the benefit of oil and gas to get here to this meeting. And oil and gas, by the way, generates electricity. P&amp;M uses a lot of gas to generate electricity. There's a reef power station on San Del Norte to show you what you can do with gas to generate clean power. I think it's a well-managed industry in New Mexico. I don't think it's out of control whatsoever. I just drove to Chama the other day. I go there frequently to go to the Chama Land and Cattle Company that Hickorya Tribones, and I drove through 550 to Dulcey, and I saw numerous oil and gas operations going on on the Hickorya Apache Reservation that were very well managed. They paint the tanks the color of the landscape to blend into the landscape. They're actually less owners than the, some of the wind towers that I see on top of the Mount Taylor and some of the solar panels that you can cover an immense amount of ground and destroy any use other than solar panels who can't even run cattle underneath us. So anyway, I appreciate all the work you've done on this. I hope it comes to a successful conclusion soon. I do respect everybody's right to speak, so I hope the right decision gets me tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Black. So, and your name, ma'am?
Pam Nice.
Pam Nice. I had Mike up here twice. You guys are tag teaming me. Come on up. And when this Nice is done, what we're going to do is we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back in and resume business. Miss Nice?
Yeah, Commissioner Chapman, Commissioner Spence. I'm Pam Nice, I'm from Placitas, New Mexico. I recently wrote you a letter, and I want to read from the summary. Recently, in Maricopa County, Arizona, an elected official acted beyond his job description and with a warped and disturbed sense of purpose before the citizens of Maricopa County could vote him out and criminal charges brought. He had cost the county taxpayers $44 billion. An oil and gas ordinance created by the industry does not protect Sandoval County taxpayers from extreme liability exposure. It does not protect Sandoval County elected and appointed officials from extreme liability and/or criminal exposure. The oil and gas industry is not known for policing itself. The Stoddard Ordinance assumes that all oil and gas operations in Sandoval County would and does follow API best practices. The Stoddard Ordinance assumes that there would never be catastrophic well failure, although we know 5% of wells do fail. The Stoddard Ordinance assumes that the oil and gas industry will bring high-paying jobs and revenue to Sandoval County but does not question the cost-benefit ratio. A bad ordinance is worse than no ordinance at all. Currently, Sandoval County does not have millions of dollars in surplus funds to sustain catastrophic liability exposure. Do your job. Passing Stoddard, an industry-written ordinance, is beyond your job description. You do not work for the oil and gas industry. You work for us. You work for me. Voting for Stoddard is acting with a warped and disturbed sense of purpose that is clear and it is on the record. Foundational on county staff writing, Stoddard and API best practices, the Citizens' Oil and Gas Ordinance protects both the county from liability exposure and upholds intent to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the Sandoval County citizens. Pass the Citizens' Oil and Gas Ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're going to take a break. 8:52 PM, two minutes left.
Mr. Chairman, if you leave the room, will we be allowed back in?
You'll have to ask the manager to go.
(inaudible).
All right, we're going to come back into our meeting. At this point, we have heard all the vote incumbent, and I would like to open for the commissioners, and my reasoning in opening tonight, as far as commissioner comments are concerned with the agenda we have in the seat, is because I want to make it clear what it is the commission is considering during the night. And then, of course, I've got my own comments that I want to make about the ordinance and so on and so forth. So tonight, my fellow commissioners, we have the opportunity to move Sandoval County forward. I'd like to clearly explain to you the agenda item that is before you. We are to discuss, review, and then vote on moving the oil and gas ordinance, which has been dutifully put forward through our consideration by the Sandoval County Planning and Zoning Commission. Our vote tonight is to only publish your ordinance, thereby formally making it available for the public to review. I also need to note that the memo which the chairman and the Planning and Zoning Commission put forth following the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 12, whereas the oil and gas ordinance was voted for, was reviewed and commented on by the director of Planning and Zoning, Mike Springfield. I would like to summarize those comments for you here again. As I know you received this summary in an email, but the public has yet to hear what those summary comments were, and I'd go ahead and invite Director Springfield and Mr. Hill to come on up, just in case there's going to be some questions from the commission in regards to this. But I do want to get on the public record Director Springfield's summary statement that he sent to the commissioners on September the 15th. I know the P&amp;Z meeting was on the 12th. We didn't actually receive Chairman Arango's memo until, as I recall, the afternoon of the 14th.
Correct.
Thank you, Director Springfield. Please pay particular attention to this part of my comments tonight because of the importance regarding the fact that these concerns about the ordinance we are considering raised by the public, but yet not important enough that the P&amp;Z commission thought that they'd be appropriate to be put in the ordinance that was voted forward. Also, because Director Springfield points out why these concerns are not included in the ordinance tonight that you're considering. Here is verbatim Director Springfield's email memo that he sent to you that I want to put into the public record tonight. Commissioners, at their meeting of September the 12th, Chairman Arango was also authorized to submit a memo on behalf of the P&amp;Z commission outlining the issues raised by the public for your consideration. Staff has reviewed that memo and offered the following comments. Overall, staff believes the chairman's memo is true and correct summary of the information presented to the P&amp;Z commission by the citizens group. On page two, four major issues are listed that the P&amp;Z commission agreed should be brought forward to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. They are: Number one, lack of public notice and opportunity to comment. Staff agreed with this comment and proposed requiring staff to post application notice on the county's website. Number two, inadequate OCD staffing, funding, and authority. Staff has repeatedly stated that this is not a county issue, but rather an issue that needs to be brought to the attention of OCD or the New Mexico Legislature. Number three, insufficient provision for protection and maintenance of roads. This issue was discussed at length by the P&amp;Z commission. Alternative language was agreed to by the P&amp;Z commission that requires Public Works Department to review an applicant's road plan to determine if county roads will need to be brought up to county standards prior to use by the oil and gas industry. This is consistent with the current practices of Sandoval County. Road bonding and maintenance funding were removed by the P&amp;Z commission as the county does not currently require this of any other type land use within the county. Inadequate insurance coverage. Insurance requirements were raised by the P&amp;Z commission from $1 million to $5 million, and that's what's in the ordinance tonight. Other issues raised by the public were not addressed by the P&amp;Z commission in their approval of the draft ordinance recommended by county commission for county commission consideration. Number one, Section 1 deals with issues related to the scope, purpose, and findings of the citizens' ordinance. These sections have little substantive bearing on the validity of the draft recommended by the P&amp;Z commission. Just remember, these are not my comments. These are not the commission's comments. These are the comments from the director of planning and zoning for Sandoval County. Section 4 requires a special use rezoning for oil and gas activities. This issue was considered and rejected when proposed SOP drafts by the staff were rejected. Section 5 and 6 have several preemptive issues that are not consistent with instructions given to the P&amp;Z commission and staff by the county commission regarding avoidance of preemptive issues. So the ordinance that's been put forth by the P&amp;Z commission represents over a year and a half of effort with input from the public industry, experts, regulatory agencies, as well as the planning and zoning staff. I would like to personally acknowledge everyone's contribution to this process. The public's passion has come through, and this board acknowledges that passion and your input. Unfortunately for me, and I cannot speak for the entire board, but I personally have experienced some negative input and feedback, which I realize kind of comes with the job, but nevertheless, it's not really needed. I also want to summarize and provide some clarity regarding public input and how we got to where we are today. So early on in the process, the public, as well as this commission, recognized that we did not have an ordinance regarding oil and gas in Sandoval County. The process started with a lot of public hearings, workshops, testimony, input. Bottom line, everyone would agree, I would think, that the process has allowed for everyone to participate. What needs to be pointed out is how the process evolved from one of the conditional use ordinance to one of the special use ordinance to finally one of a permissive use ordinance. Interestingly along the way, and please don't interrupt me, interesting along the way is that this board and the public have agreed on each instance. Then finally, when the public participation yielded a draft ordinance, what was brought forth was previously rejected special use format, which the public itself rejected. In fact, the document was basically one which the P&amp;Z commission had abandoned when it was argued by the public that they wanted an ordinance, not an administrative procedure. I have done so previously, and will acknowledge again now the hard work put in with this endeavor by our board of planning and zoning commissioners/volunteers. I mean, these folks don't get paid to do what they do. The fact that they would come here and meet for hours on end to satisfy their public service to you, the citizens of Sandoval County, I think should be commended. I've heard very little, though, if any positive comments or appreciation from the public regarding these folks' efforts. With the current ordinance and P&amp;Z board has put forth, I want to commend them for taking the time and, in fact, in excess of 10 hours, just refining the language, which I want to note that they unanimously agreed to. Given the challenge of putting forth an ordinance pertaining to oil and gas operations in Sandoval County has required that a balance be struck between those multiple regulatory layers, the ability of the county to administer the ordinance that passes, and apply countywide requirements of the industry that protect the citizens and resources of Sandoval County, this overarching concept was aptly described by our newest commissioner, Dr. James Holden Rhodes, when he issued a letter to Director Springfield stating that, and I quote, "The Sandoval County oil and gas ordinance should not, should only address those items that are not presently covered by federal and state regulations." I also need to share with you the vision of this board. There has been a change here at Sandoval County that reflects the current makeup of the board and the top executives here. We are pro-business. We are pro-economic development, and we support in our purposeful and our intent when it comes to job creation. While we are focused on expanding the business and intern the taxpayers in Sandoval County, we are also respectful of our duty in answering the citizens' call for an oil and gas ordinance, especially when you consider that the county currently has and has had for decades oil and gas producing wells without any county ordinance. It is very well documented and has been discussed many times, New Mexico's economic dependence on the oil and gas industry. So rolling out the statistics for you one more time, I don't just, I just don't think it's necessary. By the way, just worth noting how this essential industry touches every facet of yours and my life. I am proud to share with you that your own county government is taking steps to reduce dependence on fossil fuels. You may not know about this. I don't think it's ever been discussed, but we are, via our own energy efficiency initiative, once completed, all the county's facilities offices will be more energy efficient as we modernize all our equipment and add a significant dose of solar energy component to our operations, allowing us to effectively lock in our energy costs for a period of approximately the next 15 to 20 years. This accomplishes two things, that we practically eliminate the rising rates of electrical power and reduce our operational costs, saving you, the Sandoval County taxpayers, money in the process. Again, after nearly two years of public testimony, work sessions, expert advice, we have before us an oil and gas ordinance that's the culmination of these efforts to consider this evening. As is indicated in its title on our website, the Planning and Zoning Oil and Gas Draft of September 2017 was thoughtfully crafted over the course of two months and then passed by the P&amp;Z commission for your consideration. Our direction was for the Planning and Zoning Department and Commission to take a balanced approach, consider public input, as well as sought input from industry experts to deliver an ordinance that addresses these limited areas. One, setback requirements to protect homeowners, our children, schools, and playgrounds, and interaction with existing businesses. Two, noise. Three, emergency response. Four, road plans, both planned use and how to mitigate future impacts, lighting and visual concerns as well. You see in front of you this evening the statutes outlined in the ordinance passed by P&amp;Z. These are just a sampling of the statutes that regulates the oil and gas industry, and to comply with those regulations would involve another volumes, at least four or five the same size as those. These are only the state statutes lying here. The state of New Mexico imposes on the oil and gas industry, they're represented by these volumes here. They do not include the federal statutes that we couldn't get here in time for this meeting tonight. Some of you may also recall the four-page document provided to us at the Mayorka session, which outlined every concern expressed by citizens and the agency responsible for regulation. The ordinance before you effectively addresses all the issues the county concerns and provides regulatory certainty for both industry and our community members, both of whom have waited long enough for the county to take action. And that's my statement. And now, I will yield to my fellow commissioners to hear their discussion in regards to the ordinance. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Block.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for those words. I need just a few seconds to get these, Mike, if you can help me get these books.
We can't hear you. Please hear.
As the chairman said, these are just a few of a larger group of regulations and rules the industry has to go through.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now, Lou? These are just a few of the regulations and rules that the industry has to go through, and this does not include, like the chairman said, the entire Mexico code for the industry. Many of you know my background is nuclear weapons. That's what I did for over 20 years in the Air Force as a nuclear officer, and I can tell you, what I see in front of me is a hell of a lot more than what we had in the Air Force when it came to weapons, systems, safety rules, and other guidance and regulations, which is very, very well regulated and safe in the... and regulations, which is very, very well regulated and safe in the Department of Defense and the United States Air Force. With that, I want to thank all those in attendance tonight for being here, and those that are watching on video. I also want to thank the P and Z Commission for all their hard work. These are public service who volunteer their time at no cost to the taxpayer because they believe in serving, and they have a tough job, and I firmly believe they did their due diligence during this process. I know this has been a contentious, emotional, and passionate issue for most of us in the room. I have tried to look at this issue with empirical data, and to the best of my ability, to look at the data and facts without prejudice or passion. This is a tough decision we are making tonight with this perspective. I am sad and disappointed that some groups have reverted to tactics of threats, lies, bullying, and personal smears toward elected and public officials. I and my family, my family, have certainly been a target by the anti-ordinance people, as many of you are already aware. I was elected last November and took my seat on this commission in January. Since my first meeting, and I have come to understand for almost a year prior to then, Sandalaw County's need to address oil and gas operations has been belabored by our constituents, environmental groups, the oil and gas industry, and all sorts of experts from higher education to state agencies to scientists recommended by environmental action groups to lawyers and many more. I campaigned last year on reaching across to others who may have a different point of view than me. I have enjoyed meeting with many of the anti-ordinance folks, and some of them I call friends, like Dr. Alan Friedman, who is here tonight, who does not want to take credit for the ordinance he presented, however, he was instrumental in crafting it. I thank Alan and others who have come to know and respect that are on opposite sides, like Mr. Bob Wesley, who unfortunately can't be here due to injury, Mr. Mike Neese, Mr. Lou Fisher, Dr. Mary Felble, and others. What many of you may not know is I was asked to testify in front of our state PRC yesterday morning in Santa Fe by Excels Energy. Excels is in the process of investing over eight hundred million dollars to put in the largest wind farm in our great state. This farm will produce over twelve hundred megawatts and employ hundreds of construction workers and hire twenty to thirty full-time employees after completion. I was asked to advocate for that project because I believe in renewable energy, and I believe in the importance of the oil and gas industry, and I also believe in finding that right balance between economics and the environment. I think this wind farm will be, and is a step in the right direction of where I see our country going in the next twenty to thirty years. As of today, we still rely on oil and gas for so many things, from energy, transportation, infrastructure, and the hundreds of everyday products we use daily that contain petroleum ingredients. Many of you heard me discuss the economic impact the industry has on our state. While I may not be happy that our state is tied to oil and gas and federal dollars, those are the facts that we cannot ignore. We cannot ignore that this industry funds one of every three teachers in this state. I am the only county commissioner here with children in the public school system, and they're near and dear to my heart, all the kids. We cannot ignore that our seniors depend on healthcare funded by this industry. We cannot ignore that hundreds of thousands of people rely on social services funded by this industry. We cannot ignore that our infrastructure is funded by this industry, and so many other areas of our state funding that are dependent on these precious dollars. Lastly, I cannot ignore or turn my back on the tens of thousands of direct and indirect jobs that this industry supports. I think it's important to note some important points. The Chairman touched upon a few of them. This county had drilling operations for well over sixty years. During that time, I asked staff if there has ever been any ordinance before for Sandalaw County. The answer is no. The issue by previous commissions did not, this issue by previous commissions did not fulfill their obligations for decades to put together an ordinance. They failed. This is the first time this commission has new political leadership, and we are not shrieking our duty. We are moving forward. Do I believe the industry should be held accountable to the community in which they operate? Absolutely. And I'm sure that like with any industry, oil and gas has a few irresponsible operators, which is why I also support this ordinance, which includes the toughest penalties allowed by law from our representatives in Santa Fe, which has been controlled by one party for over eighty years. I also want to point out to Commissioner Iglew, I also want to point out Commissioner Iglew and the people in his district who has lived, who have lived near this industry for decades and have benefited from mineral rights and other funds. I have received calls from people residing in District Five for those in favor of the ordinance, and they are upset about the pushback down here. They have said, and these are their words, not mine, quote, "Where were these people for the last five decades when this industry expanded up here? Now we see the old white people protesting when it could affect them. I guess it's good enough for us poor minorities, but not them." That resonated with me. Those are powerful words that I have taken to heart. I believe in equality, and right now I see a lot of inequality in our county in regards to the location of industry operations. Furthermore, the public has had ample time to comment and express its concerns. We on this commission have heard from dozens of citizens in groups, and I have met personally with them numerous times. This commission was accused of not hearing a citizen presentation. That is false, and another lie by certain environmental groups. This commission put Mr. Bob Wesley on the agenda because the citizens asked for it as an expert to present us with New Mexico Tech, New Mexico Junior College, and O C D. The oil industry did not present, and since I have been on the commission, the industry has not had a formal presentation, only citizens. The P and Z also had dozens of citizens in groups come before that body to express their opinion and position. Lastly, in addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission's bipartisan, bipartisan recommendation in favor of this ordinance, my action this evening is primarily influenced by two factors. Number one, public testimony. Once again, thank you to each constituent and industry member who came forward or wrote to express your concerns and/or support. Number two, the workshop the Chairman talked about last spring. The Planning and Zoning Division provided a half-day workshop for Commissioners with third-party constituents and other experts so the community could learn more about the industry and its impact on communities. Specifically, the Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Cabinet Secretary, Mr. Ken McKean, shared current regulations governing industry, including oil conservation division or O C D within his agency, and some of them are in front of me. You may remember there's a four-page chart of regulations already in place that covers the areas of concern mentioned in public testimony numerous times throughout this whole process. Second, an instructor, an academic, of the New Mexico Junior College explained the production process through a conviction. His presentation included explaining the drilling of a well in relation to the water table and aqua form, where he specifically explained the three layers of concrete and separating extraction from the community's water. On top of which, there has not been, there has not been, and I talked to O C D, a reported case of groundwater contamination related to fracking. There have been spills, but there has not been groundwater contamination related to fracking. Mr. Toker also addressed seismic activity, a concern raised by many of you related to instances in Oklahoma. The geology in Oklahoma is not comparable to New Mexico according to the experts at New Mexico Tech, and there's never been seismic activity related to fracking in New Mexico according to the engineers, the experts that have been doing this for decades at New Mexico Tech. Economist Dr. Tom Clifford provided detailed information about the significant fiscal impact that the oil and gas industry has on our state and in Sandalaw County. One-third, one-third of the state's six billion dollar budget comes directly from oil and gas, as does the entire permanent fund, and more than forty million dollars to Sandalaw Schools. In fact, both Rio Rancho and Cuba Public Schools leaders attended the workshop in support of a business-friendly ordinance to support our children. In closing, there are currently five hundred and twenty-six active wells in Sandalaw County. In fact, there were wells that were recently drilled this year according to Mr. Springfield. As some might be aware, the Chairman discussed it, or Mr. Jenkins talked about it, we have a seven-point-one percent, seven-point-one percent unemployment rate in our county, with greater than twenty percent of our people at or living at the poverty line or below. This industry will provide direct and indirect jobs, along with much-needed G R T, when we see the average number of employees working rigs at approximately seventy-five employees per rig with an average salary of seventy-five thousand dollars a year, more than twice the annual average wages for our citizens in New Mexico. I ask those in opposition to this industry, are you going to tell them and their families you want them to lose their jobs and not be able to support their families and to move out of Sandalaw County? Are you going to tell them that we don't want them in our county? That's exactly what we are doing. I've also heard valid concerns about reclamation. The reclamation process occurs when a well is no longer producing and land is to be returned to its original purpose. Has there been issues here before? Yes, but this comes under the authority of state and federal regulations. This process is inspected and certified by O C D standards, as well as the governing authority for surface reclamation, which includes numerous state and federal regulations such as B L M, State Land Office, Tribal Governments, Surface Owners Protection Act. Our state is the fifth-largest producer of oil and gas in our great country. Our country has some of the most restrictive ordinances in the world, and now you might be aware that we are finally exporting natural gas to places like Poland. Think about that for a minute. We are on a path for Poland and other countries to no longer have to rely on Russia, who is a huge environmental polluter. And Russia holds Eastern and Central European countries hostage, and they make millions of dollars for a brutal regime. Voting for this ordinance is a vote for our schools. It's a vote for those poor people and elderly who rely on tax dollars. It is a vote for those tens of thousands of families that directly and indirectly rely on this industry as a worker or as a small business owner. I have asked those against the industry numerous times, where will the state make up the two to two-point-five billion a year in our general fund? The answers I have received are quite troubling. They have ranged from raise taxes to the extreme of to blow up the well so they never come back, which I thought was a little extreme for an environmentalist. I will not turn my back on those needy people in our state and our children. And as I started this, we must continue to invest in renewable energy like what Excels Energy is doing in Roosevelt County. However, I ask you, if you want more restrictive industry, then please write your state reps, your U.S. Senators, your U.S. reps, to change the regulations in this industry in Santa Fe and D.C. They are the ones who have failed to show leadership under eighty years of political domination by one party in our state. With that, I yield my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Block. Commissioner Iglew.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank all the people that are here because of this issue. Your passion is great, and I understand that on both sides. I also want to give thanks to the Planning and Zoning. They spent a lot of time and effort in crafting these ordinances, and as Chairman said, they don't give a dime for doing that. So I think a lot of people should thank these people for doing it.
Vote it in.
I'm a native New Mexican. I was born and raised in Sandalaw County, and, you know, oil and gas has been in this county for not fifty years, but probably close to seventy or eighty years. My father worked on a rig up in Regina when I was a young man, a very young man. I worked on a rig almost fifty years ago in the Ohonsino area. Not many of you can say that. One of the things about oil and gas, you know, these ordinances that we have, or this ordinance that we have before us, the standard ordinance and the other ordinance, I'm not happy with either one of them, plain and simple. One of them is too restrictive, one of them is too liberal. Some of the issues that I confront in my district are roads and fire safety and that, those things. They say they're addressed in the standard ordinance, very vaguely. You know, the Commissioners, the Directors of Public Works and the Fire Department will be looking at these wells and in these permits. Yet, when I talked to them recently, Public Works Director didn't know where Ohonsino was. Our fire chief had never been up to counselors. How can I have confidence in some of the people that are working for our county to be able to take these initiatives on? Employment. You know, I've seen oil and gas industry in my area for many, many years, and it's a good, solid employer. They bring economy to, you know, to the northern part of the county. When oil is good, the employment is good. When it's bad, it still keeps some of the people employed. Our schools depend very, very much on the oil and gas industry, and it goes all the way down. It just doesn't affect Cuba or Hemisprings. It affects Rio Rancho School, Colonel Leo Schools. One of the things that troubles me about this whole deal is that, for, like I said, fifty years, sixty years, they've been drilling up in northern Sandalaw County. And this issue had never been a problem until Sandrich came down here about a year, two years ago. Before that, nobody cared. Not one, nobody from southern Sandalaw County made an issue to come up and see what was going on in the oil and the gas industry up there. I'm not sure how I'm going to balance this act because I have people, and I have a lot of the Native American communities that are opposed to the oil and gas industry, but yet they have them in their backyards, and they're making some money off of it. And yet I have private owners that want the oil and gas industry. They don't want, they don't want anybody telling them, hey, you're, you can't come in onto my property and tell me what to do. So it's a big balancing act that we have to play. I hope that the people that are here and people of Sandalaw County understands that, you know, we're going to try to get an ordinance. I do want an ordinance passed. If it's this one, possibly. If it's not, then let's move on to something that's bigger and better. But I'm hoping that we put this to bed soon, and we can all go on with our lives, because my phone can't take it. and we can all go on with our lives because my phone can't take any more emails. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Iwo. Commissioner Holden Rhodes.
The last two weeks have been a blur. Trying to get up to speed. In addition to the oil and gas issue, I've been stampeded by horses and placidas. We have a highway up there that is sinking. And a bunch of folks want on a tennis court. But my main focus has been on this. Again, several thoughts. I had the privilege of teaching the Constitution last spring and the previous fall. And it was fascinating to understand what the founding fathers went through. They went to Philadelphia. They had specific instructions to take the Articles of Confederation and try and fix them. And when they got there, they looked at each other and said, there ain't no way this thing can be fixed. And so they looked back, they looked all the way back to the Greeks and the Romans and tried to understand government, governments before them. They looked at the philosophers who came later, Hobbes, Locke, Montesquieu, Descartes. And they looked at this thing called social contract, this agreement between the government and the people. How should that work? And they put together this incredible document called the Constitution, which we have today. There is nothing like it in this world, nothing like it. And what you see here this evening is the Constitution alive. Now, they came away from their history and studies with two thoughts. Human nature hasn't changed since the time of the Romans and the Greeks. And secondly, the compromise was absolutely critical. And in order to ensure good government, there had to be checks and balances, which is what you are seeing here tonight. And most importantly, there had to be an educated populace. So you all are to be commended for coming out tonight. Let me speak specifically, building upon that background, to oil and gas. One of the things that struck me as I went through is that there's no industry in this country that comes even remotely close to being regulated as is the oil and gas industry. A, B, when you take a look at what areas the county can look at, they are miniscule. The federal government has about 80 to 85% of the regulations. State government comes in, and it leaves us a very small number of things to take a look at. B or C or D. Early on, I expressed my concern about water, and I expressed my concern about monitoring. I'm convinced that over the last five or six years, the industry has changed through fracking for the better. And I'm convinced the techniques that are used now will protect our aquifer. The only areas that I'm uncomfortable, the only area that I'm uncomfortable with is monitoring and regulation. That is left to the state of New Mexico. I don't think they do a good job. I don't think their staff is large enough to do what needs to be done. So that is a concern for me. All those thoughts together wrap this thing up so I don't bore you to death. I think it's important to pass the ordinance for two reasons. Because it protects what we want to protect. Secondly, it sends a message that Sandalaw County is in the business of doing business. And I see the oil and gas industry as a catalyst for the southern part of the county. Service industry will follow, other industries will follow. So I will tell you right now, I am voting for the ordinance.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Holden Rhodes. Commissioner Hile.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say that I appreciate all the folks who've come out, not only for this meeting, but all the PNC meetings and previous commission meetings. And I also want to thank our PNC commissioners and PNC staff. I received an awful lot of calls. I received a lot of calls and emails. Sorry, I wasn't able to get back to you on all those, but I was busy. In those calls, I received a lot of what was clearly a misunderstanding of facts, in many cases, some misstatement of facts. So one of the things that I did in these, Section 1.4, which is state and federal protections, I got some help to go find the URLs for where I could research each one of these. Now, I got to be honest, I didn't get to all of them, but I got to the ones that I think were most important. And when you look at those in relation to some of the penalties, Water Quality Act is, for instance. A compliance order shall state with reasonable specificity the nature of the violation independently assessed. So the penalty can either be $15,000 a day in non-compliance in one circumstance, or $10,000 a day for each violation in another circumstance. With regard to the, let's see, the Surface Owner Protection Act requires a bond or letter of surety for up to $10,000 per well. The Solid Waste Act. Solid Waste Act, if a violation involves a quantity of solid waste that is less than 5,000 pounds, is guilty of a misdemeanor in the sentence of a hard degree. And if more than 5,000 pounds, then guilty of a fourth-degree felony. Under the Clean Water Act, the amount of Class 1 civil penalty could be anywhere from $10,000 to $25,000. In the Class 2 civil penalty, it could be anywhere up to $125,000. So I guess my point is, is there's an awful lot of regulation out there already and a lot of, let's say, encouragement for the oil and gas industry to comply with regulations so they're going to get fined and taxed right out of business. With regard to this particular ordinance, I do have a few issues with it. I'd like to see as we move forward to post it that there be a couple corrections to it in terms of the format. And it seems like we've got Article 1, and we go on to Section 1, 2, 3, 4, and then somehow further down, we get to Section 3 has an A, but there's no B. So it ought to be all just Section 3.1. And then you get to Article 4, and it goes A, B, C, D. It ought to be 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4. Then you get to Article 5, the permit application, it goes A, B, C, D, et cetera. It ought to be 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4. It's going to be consistent. It's something that we want to put forward to the public. The only other item that I have that I would want us to embellish somewhat, and this was, I've got to admit, an idea that came out of the citizens, was some additional wording under L, which I think that would be Section 5.12, that would add, let's see, concerning protection waters, we will provide estimates of how much water will be used, the type of water to be used, and where the water is planned to be sourced. The operator will take reasonable measures necessary to prevent pollution of surface water, groundwater, and use of non-podable water wherever possible. That would be my suggestions to what we would correct it as we post it. Oh, one other comment. I have to support some of the other comments that we've said here with regard to the economic impact on our state. 30% of our state income comes from oil and gas. And we want to talk about renewables and all for it. I'd like to see more solar and wind. But we still have some issues to deal with those. It's kind of hard to store solar and wind. I've done a lot of research on that and how it is being stored. Some systems use compressed air. There's another pilot project in, I think it's in Nevada, that uses molten salt, which needs to be 450 degrees before it can be liquid. And, but even those have some environmental impact issues. And also, the ability to transport or through transmission lines these large renewable facilities to where you need the power. And I guess the one last comment I'd like to make with regard to the comparison to natural gases, for instance, is the limitation of exporting of renewables. You can export them to your neighboring states, but you sure can't export them to Poland or Eastern Europe. And there's a lot of potential for us here in the United States to be able to do that. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hile, thank you for your comments. So...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just from a procedural point, could we have those changes Commissioner Hile just outlined made into a motion, please, to amend the ordinance as such?
Yeah, we're going to have to do that if we're going to amend it and pass it. So I will challenge Director Commissioner Hile to reiterate those.
He does want a two-minute shot. So we've got under, when we get to Section 3.1, it should be just 3.1. There's an A, but there's no B.
Right.
Okay. When we get to Article 4, instead of using letters, we should be consistent in using 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4.
For A, B, C, and D.
Instead of A, B, C, and D. And then Article 5, it ought to be, instead of A, should be 5.1. And you can continue those numbers up to L, which would then be 5.12. And then the text edit that I suggested for comparing to Section 5.12 would be, and I can hand you this piece of paper if you want. But it would say, the applicant shall certify that it will comply with the requirements of OCD and N and E D concerning the protection of waters and will provide estimates of how much water will be used, the type of water to be used, fresh, ethyl, or produced, and where the water is planned to be sourced. Operator will take all reasonable measures necessary to avoid pollution of surface water and groundwater and use of non-podable water wherever possible. You can have this document.
We've got it on the record now.
So I make that motion. All right?
Okay.
Okay. So then, going forward though, Director Springfield, I would like for you to put on the public record what was staff's recommendation in regards to this ordinance brought forth by PNC.
Our recommendation was for approval for publishing general summaries out.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Block.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Springfield, I just have a couple of questions I'd like you to answer that have been brought to me from some residents. You know, I think it's important to note to a certain extent the performance reputation, definitely the performance reputation, but there's also proprietary information that comes to the financial condition of any new welding, of any new drilling company, which comes into our county. I think you would agree with that, sir?
Yes, sir.
What provisions are now in place in this regard? And how, if any, if in any way, will it change with this ordinance?
There are no provisions for it, and it would not change with this ordinance. And I would note for the record that we do not require that of any other business, industry, anything in this county.
So you are not, I want to make sure I understand this is an important part when it comes to the financials. You are not required to review the financials of any business that comes across your office for a permit. Is that correct?
Correct.
Why is that?
Because that's not our job. We do land use. We wouldn't know anything about the finances of a company if we had to.
Okay. I'd like to just ask you about the reclamation process real quick. Now, we've talked about the number of wells here, about 527. Is that a good number that you would agree with, sir?
We go anywhere between 480 and 530. It just depends what database you're looking at. Do we cover about 480 through OCD's last figure?
480, would that be considered operational?
Yes.
Would operational be considered still drilling? Or could they still be operational but not drilling right now? In other words, the industry could come back. In other words, right, it could be shut down, but the industry could come back and commence operations again.
Correct.
So when the operations process is over, tell me what the reclamation process is to get that land back to its natural state.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Block, my understanding, the OCD regulations are specific to plugging and abandonment. There is a process of plugging the well, and once the well is plugged by the regulations, it cannot be used again.
Is it inspected after it's plugged?
Now, I don't know, sir.
So I was told it was inspected by the state, not by the county.
That's true.
That is true.
It is true.
Okay. So it is inspected when it's plugged by the state?
Correct.
By the state, yes. Okay. Then the industry will remove all the equipment off that parcel of land when they're completed after the plugging. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then they try to get the vegetation back?
Yes.
Take some time, obviously?
Yes.
Very well. Tell me, there's been some talk concerning groundwater contamination. Has there been any groundwater contamination here in Sandalaw County in 60-plus years of fracking and drilling and gas operations that you know of?
Not that we can, and we researched that, and we've talked to New Mexico Tech about that, and we've talked to OCD about that. Nobody has any information that that has ever occurred. We cannot get a citation, and we've been asking for the citation from the public. Whoever's making these accusations, and we still cannot get a citation on. Where to go look that information up to find if that's the case?
We also talked about the last penalty to the oil and gas industry, I'm sure you've heard, correct?
Correct.
We talked about the $300 a day penalty fee, correct?
Correct.
Is that, is that regulated by the county or is that regulated by the state?
Regulated by the state requirement of the county as the maximum they can charge. And we cannot charge that. We can take the violation to court, and a judge can issue that.
We've also heard some concerns regarding, and I talked about it in my remarks, seismic activity. I just want to verify with you, I was told by New Mexico Tech and OCD that no seismic activity in Sandalaw County related to the operations here. Is that, are they telling me that fact?
Correct. Same thing they told us.
I'd also just, real quick, like, the last question I want to talk to you about, and I don't know if Chief Masterson is in the room or not.
He's listening upstairs.
Okay. Well, you're the deputy, right?
Depends on the question.
I have an emergency response question, if you could come forward, sir, and answer that, if you're qualified to do that.
I will do my best, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hile. I might ask something for you out there. Can you speak your name for the record?
Eric Masterson, Deputy Chief of Sandalaw County Fire Department.
How long have you been the deputy chief for it? Can you speak here to the mic more, please?
Eric Masterson, Deputy Chief of the Sandalaw County Fire Department.
Can everyone still hear him or not?
No.
Eric Masterson, Deputy Chief for the Sandalaw County Fire Department.
How long have you been a firefighter for here in Sandalaw County?
Since 2006, so going on 12 years.
What type of training do you guys do in relation to the wells around Sandalaw County?
Training about oil and gas in general comes in our firefighter 2-level training. So it's the advanced level of training, which all of our career firefighters, and we are working on all of our volunteer firefighters getting up to that level as well. But we talk about everything from the transportation of oil and gas and how to deal with those emergencies, to how to deal with tank fires, well fires, et cetera.
So you're telling me the various contingencies related to transportation or fires on site, your firefighters are trained to respond to those contingencies? your firefighters are trained to respond to those contingencies?
We have training in how to deal with those contingencies, yes. In association with, a lot of times, we might need to utilize agency partners, and we have those mutual.
But that's what they do, you think, is it not?
Absolutely, yes, sir. It's mutual aid agreements are very good in this county.
I mean, other counties, or Pernaleo, for instance, or Rio Rancho has actually called you guys to aid them in contingency operations, correct?
Yes, yes, sir, that is correct.
Do you know if, I understand San Antonio County firefighters are trained in these contingency operations. Do you know if there's been a partnership with Rio Rancho, Corrales, Pernaleo, Placitas, Hemos, any of the other firefighters around the county that are trained in relation to transportation of fuel or contingency operations on site?
If they have the firefighter two training levels, which I know they have in Corrales, in Pernaleo, in Rio Rancho, then yes, they would have that same level of training that we do.
So that provides you a hell of a lot more manpower than what you have currently in San Antonio County, correct?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Can I try and ask my questions?
Commissioner Block, Commissioner Ickell came up with a question he has.
The citations that are given to any violators on the oil and gas industry. You mentioned going to a judge. It doesn't specify that in the ordinance anywhere about where it goes to. What judge or what court would it go to?
So the PNC step is regulated by the state statutes on what counties can and cannot do. And there are two ways that any planning and zoning issue, land use issue can go before a judge as either through a civil action or through a criminal action. And the criminal action can be filed in either magistrate court or district court. So it's up to the county attorney at that point.
Judge discretionary then to the judge whether they want to fine them three hundred dollars or not?
Correct, and it would be the same thing with a yard that has a lot of trash in it.
I have a couple of questions for Deputy Fire Chief. In reference to some of the questions that Commissioner Block was asking, sir. How much material do you have in storage to be able to go after an oil and gas fire?
It depends on the size of the fire. A transportation fire versus a rig on fire versus a storage tank on fire.
Can you speak more to the mic, please?
Sorry. It depends on the size of the fire or what is involved in the fire, whether it's a transportation rig, whether it's the oil drilling rig itself, or whether it's a storage tank, for example. All of them are going to require a different approach. All of them are going to require different levels of manpower and equipment. Unfortunately, in certain areas of the county, the best thing that you can use in these types of fires, for example, is going to be foam. And we do have a great amount of foam throughout our county and our mutual aid partners, all very good amount of foam. We use it on standard fires, same as we would use it on oil rig type fires. It's a different type of foam, but it's the same concept. Getting access to those areas can be challenging at times, depending on the size of the fire, depending on if it's a storage tank, for example. A lot of times throughout the country, if you ever look at a storage tank of oil on fire in these mass production areas, they call on resources from all over the country just because it takes a lot of manpower and a lot of equipment to put some of these fires out. So it really depends on the size and the volume that is being consumed by fire. But again, transportation type trucks, rigs that catch fire, things of that nature, we've actually experienced very minor situations that have been able to put out by our resources in San Antonio County and with our partnering agencies. So we are able to handle the stuff that we feel like we would see. That being said, we would obviously need to probably up the amount of equipment and storage of foam that we have, which is me on the safe side.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ickell, thank you. If there aren't any more questions or comments, it's time now for this board to consider the ordinance that was put forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think we're going to need a new motion because we have amended. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just being careful here. I heard the motion, but I didn't hear a second invoked on that motion to amend.
No, I understand. That's why I'm calling for it. So I'm calling for a motion as amended. Do I hear a motion?
So moves.
Do I hear a second? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the oil and gas ordinance that was brought forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission as amended tonight. We're basically talking about numbering and lettering in the document with a little bit of verbiage that was offered by Commissioner Heil. Do you have a comment, sir?
Just a motion to postpone.
Yeah, that's, it's not to approve. It's just a motion to publish and post the document. In fact, I can refer to Director Springfield for all the technical language that's involved in this process. Would you like to volunteer that up, sir?
Mr. Chairman, it's a request for a motion to approve publication in title of general summary of the Planning and Zoning Oil and Gas Ordinance Draft, September 2017, planned version.
There we are. So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Vice Chair Heil?
Yes.
Commissioner Block?
Aye.
Commissioner Holden Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ickell?
Go.
Chair Chagrin?
Chair Boches, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, this board is not done tonight. We have a closed session that we're going to go into now. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Appreciate you. A motion to go into a closed session to discuss limited personnel matters, discussing how the interdepartmental department with the open meetings at Section 10-50, Section 1H2. Do I hear a motion?
So moves.
Got a motion to second, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Aye.